Counsel, I will call this meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 20th at 6:01 PM. And we begin tonight's meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilwoman Perro?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Burn?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here.
Absent are Councilman Cavanagh and Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. If you'd all like to, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Legions. Next on the agenda, we will have the community invocation, which will be performed by Justin Jordan of Real Life Ministries. Thank you for being here. And for those of you who would like to, if you would like to just take this as a moment of silence as compared to participate in the community invocation, you're more than welcome to do so. Weston?
Thank you, Mayor. Why don't we spend some time praying? Lord, just come before you this evening, recognizing, God, that we are blessed to live in the community that we live in. And, Lord, as these council members join together to make decisions for our city, we are reminded of Romans 13 that says that they've been put in leadership position by you. We pray, God, that they would lead with integrity, lead with leadership and vision in the decisions that they make for the betterment of our community would actually allow our community to continue to thrive, Lord. We thank you for their service. We thank you for their sacrifice and their willingness to make our community great. Lord, pray for our community as we continue to grow and continue to see people come. May we continue to be a light to the rest of our state and our nation, Lord. Thank you for these leaders. I pray for their life and blessing in the midst of the meeting tonight. We pray this in your son's name.
Thank you.
Weston, always a pleasure, buddy.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
And for the record, Councilwoman Strater has joined us. Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, there are some changes to the agenda this evening. Item number six will have an updated number, changing from Resolution Number 20-2233 to, I guess that's consent, actually. We'll just talk about that at consent. But there is another change in executive session, which was number 12. We are going to add 74-2061F to this evening's executive session.
Councilman Hoagland?
I would second the adoption of the agenda as amended.
You have a motion, second, to adopt the agenda as amended. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next item is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Like I just said, consent agenda, item number six, will have an updated number, changing from 20-2233 to Resolution Number 20-2237. With that, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland?
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, do you want to send up into the public forum?
Mr. Mayor, there are none.
Okay. And with that, we will move into action items. First action item is a public hearing, which was continued from September 15, 2020, for Jocelyn Park subdivision, H 2020-0067. I will continue this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good day, members of the council. Again, this was continued from about a month ago. I'm just going to do a brief overview of the project again for our benefit and for the record, and then I'll hand it over to the applicant to get into a little bit more of the details that have come about since September 15th. And let me share my screen. The application before you consists of 12.67 acres of land zoned R8 and is located at the south side of West Victory Road, approximately a quarter mile west of South Meridian. The subject property was annexed in 2013 as part of a larger area known as Victory South. There is an existing development agreement associated with this annexation and property and a preliminary plat that was approved for this property in 2018 under the same plat. That plat is set to expire in December of this year. The proposed development has a gross density of 5.1 dwelling units per acre, meeting the density requirements for the future land use designation of medium density residential. Access for this development is proposed via extension of stub streets from adjacent subdivisions in the south and the northwest. The applicant is proposing to stub a street to the property located to the northeast of the site for future connectivity, and it will have a temporary cul-de-sac on it as well, as seen here. The applicant is proposing the new local street, so 33-foot street sections within 47 feet of right-of-way, which allows on-street parking where there are no driveways. A minimum of 10% qualified open space is required. According to the open space exhibit, the applicant is proposing a total of 3.65 acres of open space. After removing the in-cap lot in the south, which is this one, and the open space lot here due to UDC requirements regarding the pond, the amount of qualified open space left is 2.46 acres, which is vastly more than the requirement of 1.3. The issue that was before City Council about a month ago was regarding the canal and the required sidewalk along the frontage. The location in relation to Victory Road brings up many concerns here. Code dictates that sidewalks are required when the property is frontage on public roads like that of Victory Road. ACHD has conditioned the applicant to construct the detached sidewalk at least 31 feet from centerline. This requirement would place the sidewalk within the irrigation district easement and into the toe of the slope if it was placed adjacent to Victory Road. The applicant filed an appeal with ACHD regarding this, and that appeal was denied, and ACHD is still requiring them to have a sidewalk. Since the last meeting, I have received this revised plat, and it shows a proposed alternative that staff finds meets the intent of the sidewalk requirements. It would be basically creating a sidewalk on the north part of this open space and connect back down to the new local street, use the sidewalks on that local street, go over one building lot, and then come out to Victory Road through the common lot in the adjacent subdivision. The applicant representative for Timberline to the west of Jocelyn Park has agreed to this as well, and ACHD has also given their support of this. Other than that, I would like to hand it off to the applicant at this point, and they can, or I will stand for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, council, any questions for staff at this point? Is the applicant's representative here with us? Come forward and say your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bonnie Leighton. I'm with WH Pacific at 690 South Industry Way, Suite 10 in Meridian, Idaho, 83642. And appreciate your time this evening to review this issue for our client. As you can see, as Joseph had said, we did approach ACHD to request the waiver, which they denied.
Can you speak a little? Pull up the mic so it's closer.
Sorry. Is that better? Okay. We had approached ACHD to request a waiver from the staff decision to place it in the location that was a concern for us. Instruction from the district was that we were to work with staff to come up with a couple of alternatives that would still meet the standards of ACHD that we could bring back to you folks, along with the one that you see on the screen here that Joseph identified. The other alternative would be to use the sidewalk that's at the entrance. Do you have a picture of the plan with the entrance to Timberline? Do you happen to have that on your screen? Got some hard copies that I could maybe hand out. I think Matt would have sent that. So the other option would be to just use... How do you want me to do this?
It's the first time we've used this feature in a while. I'll go make copies.
I do have some here.
Mr. Clerk, we do have council members who can't see copies from here.
Everybody, are we ready to proceed? Can everybody kind of see? What I wanted to show in this and just illustrate, the image that Joseph has up on the screen, if you head farther to the west, that's where you see the entrance into Timberline subdivision, which in conversations with ACHD, they are amenable to using the sidewalk at that entrance and then coming down, connecting along the street on the north side, as opposed to going through the common lot. So they're amenable to that as well. And then, of course, what the plan would be is to pick up the sidewalk at our park in the common lot and head it north and then keep continuing to the east. In that second option, we're using their infrastructure. It's a little bit cleaner of a scenario for them. But we've worked diligently with staff, both here at the city. We appreciate their time and their help, as well as with ACHD to try to resolve this issue. So with that, we ask for your approval tonight, and I can stand for any questions that you may have. I believe this was the only outstanding item for you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? And for those that are remote, you feel like you've seen what is being proposed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Not sure that visual was quite what I needed, but I think I understood verbally. Might be good if the applicant could, or you guys could just describe that. I guess my, but my general question, though, is just, what are we doing to the east and how are we getting people safely across the street? It kind of feels a little bit like a road to nowhere. I don't think the, you know, plot next door has a plan yet. So is there a plan for maybe a pedestrian bridge to go across this canal or a plan to the east? Or just give us a flavor for the bigger picture of how people will safely get around from a pedestrian perspective?
Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, it was our understanding, at least when we first came in, that there was an application that's now been pulled that was to the east, and that was one of our concerns. To begin with, just the access, there's actually no room. As you head east adjacent to Victory Road and the canal, there's no room for a sidewalk. So originally, it was always planned that whatever pedestrian access there would be in the future, it would develop on the south side of the canal on those eastern parcels. The parcel right next to us is an out parcel and wasn't part of that proposed development that had been withdrawn. But as we were instructed to try to put in whatever connection that we could do for future development, so we did as we were instructed. For the time being, of course, though, people moving through the site would either go to the south and around, or maybe there's a little sign that's, I don't know, not a through pedestrian access, I'm not sure. But we're doing what's typically seen, I guess, and required of developers to at least stub to the edge of our property. So we've tried to do that as requested.
Joe, from a staff perspective, I mean, obviously, we don't want a sidewalk to nowhere. Is the intention of the Community Development Department to continue to extend the sidewalk along the parcels on this side of the canal and then propose a way for it to connect to Meridian Road? Is that what's envisioned?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is correct, yes, because like the applicant has stated, there's no room on the west side or north side, depending on your frame of reference, from the canal and Victory Road. Without realigning and doing major reconstruction of that by ACHD, there will be no room for a sidewalk there. So it is the intention and would be the requirement if that other project had not been withdrawn to have that sidewalk on the south and east side of the canal. So this, eventually, when this out parcel gets redeveloped and then the other two or three parcels to the northeast of that, this will continue through there. However, those applications deem it.
On to Meridian Road. Does that answer your question?
Yes, eventually to Meridian Road, correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Councilwoman Strater.
I guess the only piece that I wasn't tracking was, is there the ability, or would it be appropriate to ensure there's some kind of crossing to the north? Is there a sidewalk there they could connect to? Or is that just not typically done in this type of instance?
Councilwoman Strater. That was sort of the point of this continuance in the sense that they can't directly cross it here, or we have determined to be very unsafe. So the existing crossing, I guess you could say, is at the Timberline entrance, which is why they were proposing to use some of their sidewalk and then connect back out to where Timberline will stub their sidewalk to, which is about right here. And then, you know, anybody would be able to continue west along the frontage, and that's the thing that Bonnie was trying to show us. I took a blue, a closer picture for you so that we could see the parcel that is in question.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, if I may, Joseph, could you scroll back to this, thank you, to this image? So initially, what we had spoke about was, you know, trying to, as an alternative, we had promoted crossing at the entrance to the Timberline subdivision and connecting up with the 10-foot pathway on that side. That was a proposal that was not in agreement with the city or the feedback that we received. And so we worked to try to comply with requirements of both the city and ACHD on this and came up with the development that we're showing you tonight. There we go. That's it. So thank you very much.
And speaking only for myself, but we do promote detached sidewalks. This is just a little bit more detached than we normally would do, but it is the same basic concept when it's all said and done. And we normally would not require someone to provide access across the street, especially if they're building into a planned sidewalk network. If this is what is envisioned for the planned sidewalk network to be on the south side of the canal, then that seems to meet the intentions of what we need, because no one has to walk on the street side to get to any specific location if it connects to Meridian Road, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
The applicant just wanted to check through a couple of things. You have the turnaround, and there was some concern, I think the commission talked about making sure it's wide enough, big enough for fire trucks and whatnot. Does that turnaround, does design now meet all city requirements?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, yes, that would be the case, that we've designed it to meet those requirements.
And follow up, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland?
Two questions. One is the micro path, and the other is that open space where that sidewalk is. The micro path, I think they noted something that needs to be at least 15 feet wide, so I don't think there was, it didn't look like it met requirements, but that's something my staff will make sure it does. Is that what we're going to do on that? I guess that's more a question for Joe. We don't need to make sure that's conditioned or anything like that.
Councilman Hoagland, that is, you're referring to the micro path in the, I guess, the eastern half, correct? That's the one that I was concerned about.
Yes.
I do have a condition already in there regarding that with, just to ensure that it's at least 15 feet wide through the whole thing. So there's no need to, I guess, address that separately of that.
Great. Thank you. And the last one was, I was just curious about that open space between the street and the sidewalk. Is that an area that the HOA will take care of? Is that, Lon, what is that going to look like?
Yes, Councilman Hoagland, this, you're talking about the green area to the north. That's our public park with amenities that we have submitted as part of our application. That would be part of the HOA.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I may...
Mr. Mayor.
Just now that we've got the entrance, so ACHD was amenable for us coming down this way through and then connecting up and connecting the sidewalk that way. The other option was, as Joseph had shown, to go through the common lot. Both versions meet their intent of pedestrian connection.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro, I saw you move, but we didn't hear your voice, just so you know.
So, can you hear me?
Nothing yet.
You can't hear me? I can hear her.
I can.
Yeah, everybody else has given me the thumbs up. Are you not able to hear me in the council chambers?
Can... Remote Liz, Councilwoman Strater, are you able to speak? Can we hear you?
I think so, but I can hear Jessica. I'm assuming you can hear me.
For our three remote council members.
Can Councilman Hoagland hear me? So Liz, would you mind repeating my question? I don't think they can hear me either now. Raise your hand if you can hear me. No, they can't hear me. No one. Type your question in the chat box. There is no chat box on my side.
We're good now.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yep, we got audio.
Okay, so that was not on my side, then. No wonder you weren't answering me. I addressed the mayor about four times. Excuse me. So I just have a couple more questions for the applicant. First of all, I'm wondering if it'd be possible to put a side-by-side or to show what the original plan was for that section that's on the north side between the canal and the street? I'm trying to remember what that looked like, and if that is the same size? If you just took a portion of the open space out in order to put that sidewalk in? And are there any other differences with this revised plat other than the sidewalk? Are there any changes to the size of the lots, anything like that? I just wanted to clarify if that sidewalk was the only change that was made to the revised
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro, we made some minor revisions based on some preliminary planning and zoning comments, but no, the only change that we've made is showing that sidewalk through the open space and how that would connect up. As Joseph mentioned, we will exceed the required open space for this development. So even taking into consideration that the sidewalk would maybe be counted as taking up some of that, we're still far exceed the open space requirement for this. Did I answer all of your questions, Councilwoman?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Yes, you did. I wasn't concerned as much about the entire open space, obviously, based on the staff presentation. You've met it quite well. I just wasn't sure if it altered that area in any other capacity other than just having the sidewalk go through, or if you had had, you know, had to adjust any of the lot sizes or anything, if you had to make any major modifications in order to get that sidewalk in that location, is what I was attempting to ask. But I think we're good now. You have answered my questions. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Maybe just a quick follow-up for staff. Is there, I assume staff has a preference for the proposed pedestrian connection, but is there a major difference between the option that goes through the common lot or existing, connecting to that other sidewalk network that's further down? I'm not sure where the sidewalk ends, if there is a sidewalk on Victory on the adjacent property to the west.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater, the difference is about four building lots, and there are eight, so it's going to be roughly 200-ish extra feet if they were to go and stay on the sidewalk along Cumberland. Staff's opinion would be to use the sidewalk here or add a sidewalk through the common lot just to make it a quick, you know, about 100-foot transition to Victory Road. When Timberline is constructed, the sidewalk will end about here where this pump, irrigation pump thing is. So it'll connect right into there, and that would be staff's preference.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Strater, in speaking with ACHD in terms of their preference and also speaking with the planner for the Timberline sub, it's my understanding that ACHD had conveyed to them that using the existing infrastructure at the entrance would actually be better for ACHD, otherwise they're entering into some sort of agreement with the Timberline sub because that's their infrastructure for their sidewalk. So it might be a little bit cleaner to do it at the entrance, but... but again, what they had communicated to us is that either scenario would be acceptable. I think our preference would be to use the one at the entrance, just to keep that as clean as possible.
From a connectivity standpoint, I mean, would, I assume Timberline has sidewalk that's required along the frontage, and then it would come to a red stop, which is a pretty much wasted sidewalk at that situation, in my opinion. You know, so I, to me, it's either don't have Timberline do it and route it all the way through or connect it through there instead of having a red sign that says you can't go any further. That just looks unfinished and dumb.
Mr. Mayor, I was trying to recall when we talked about Timberline, there was that discussion about where to cross Victory. And was it going to be down there? It was going to be closer to that where their entrance is. And there was some discussion, was it right there? Was it a little bit further to the west, I think? Because of that curve and everything that takes place and making sure there was enough distance and sight lines.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilman Hoagland, the, one of the proposed options by the applicant was to actually install a real pedestrian crossing here, which there is not one. And that would be at the entrance of Timberline number two and then use those sidewalks. They are, Timberline is going to build a sidewalk, and it will stop at basically the edge of the irrigation district easement. Because that sidewalk is there, I mean, when we did a site visit, we saw two kids walk to the end of this here and cross the street right there and jaywalk. So we understand and know that there is that danger potential, which is part of the reason why the applicant does not want to construct a sidewalk along this curve for obvious reasons here. I do happen to agree with Mr. Mayor that if, if we don't have the internal connection in the common lot as shown here, then yes, that sidewalk would just dead-end there and would, I think, incentivize people to stop there and be like, oh, I'm going to cross Victory now because that's the only other place for a sidewalk. So if we have this here at this juncture, at least they have another way to go here.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to comment on that. Yeah, that, that makes sense. If you have a sidewalk that dead-ends and what, that expectation. So I mean, I mean, if they want to come into the subdivision and take that sidewalk up, they could. But this way, if they just continue not aware of what's in the subdivision, you take that and come up and meet that and continue on to, although it's going to dead-end, you know, further to the east because that's, depending on that property owner's, what they do with that property. And so there, there is some validity to your argument, Mr. Mayor. I'll grant you that. Just one.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, Joseph, if you could maybe put on the one that has all, the full Timberline entrance. I don't know if it's the camera again. And that was one of our concerns. And so in thinking about where are people crossing to get to the north side? And, you know, to the mayor's point of maybe stopping at the, if we were to stop the sidewalk at the entrance to the Timberline sub and not have them continue on and build that to the west, that entrance is a pretty good indication of where you're going to go because there wouldn't be a sidewalk to continue you down. And so if you're looking at the west, you know, okay, I'm not going to be able to continue on. It's going to be a landscape strip. There's no sidewalk, so I better cross here if I want to keep going down. So heading to the east. So again, that would work with ACHD's either option.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I apologize, but I, I didn't really follow that line of thinking from the applicant. I don't know if it's because I'm more visual, but I'm not, I'm not really tracking with what, what it is that you're proposing. So I'm understanding the mayor's concerns about people crossing, not, not realizing that the sidewalk will go just to the south and through this subdivision and eventually out to the east and, and, you know, jumping over across Victory Road. But I, I've lost you from there. So you had talked about pedestrians walking to the west and connecting, then across in the main entrance and Timberline and up to the north pathway. Is that what, I mean, sorry, just go ahead and repeat what you were saying.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, just following up from what Joseph had described and what we had initially proposed and then hearing what Councilman Hoagland had said about the Timberline subdivision, and there was some discussion about where they were going to cross up there to the, further to the west. And maybe I misunderstood, Councilman Hoagland. But in terms of this subdivision here, so initially what we had proposed last time was that there would be a pedestrian crossing here that would take you to the 10-foot path. And Timberline has a sidewalk that comes here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, when, when you say here and there, we have no way to tell where you're looking or where you're talking about because there's no pointer or anything showing up on our screen. That's part of why I think I'm getting lost.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm drawing on the image, but maybe you can't. Can you see the image?
I can now, but it wasn't showing up before.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm using the touchscreen to draw. So initially, we had proposed a crossing here, and that's what Joseph was speaking about. Councilman Hoagland had said it sounded like there was some discussion about crossing when the Timberline subdivision had come in. Maybe I misunderstood that. But initially, we had proposed a crossing here, and then people could go to the north and connect up with the, the pathway on the north side of Victory. If I'm understanding the mayor correctly, you know, building this sidewalk, obviously stopping it here, there, that's a sidewalk to nowhere. So one of the options is, okay, connect it through the common lot, which ACHD is amenable with. The other option is, what if we were to, you know, just, this was just to be landscaped through here and the sidewalk, there wasn't a continuation this way, that you came down through the subdivision, connected up, and then went through our common lot? And maybe I misunderstood the mayor, but that's.
That's accurate from my perspective. I would either recommend we have us stop at Timberline and go south or continue and go that direction. And I don't know what ACHD's, I know Justin's on the call. If Timberline's been approved with the sidewalk, I assume.
Yeah.
That, you know, how that would even work if we did not want the sidewalk. I guess that's where the question for council. Do you want sidewalk in front of Timberline or not? Or would, are you okay with the entering this Timberline subdivision for pedestrian access? And we, if the hawk signal is what is desired in this location, I'm not saying to say it should be. I don't know if it's a good place for one or not. But would you rather have them put the money that they might put in the sidewalks into a hawk signal in this location to allow that connection across? As compared to a sidewalk that has no purpose? And I'm mixing two applications, but the issues are all related.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just trying to mentally walk through this. I mean, if, if you're going to have a 10-foot sidewalk, and do I understand that is what it would be if it's long Victory Road in front of the Timberline? No, that's on the other side. That's right. So it's a normal sidewalk, just like there is in front of their house. You know, I would, if I were a homeowner in that area, I would prefer the sidewalk to be along Victory Road instead of having more people walking in front of my house. Now, there is a group out there, just to give you some idea of what's going on. That parcel to the east that is unplatted and applications have been filed but withdrawn. I mean, they would like to make it a park, nature reserve type thing. You know, funding and all those types of challenges are out there. But if that were to happen, you know, that, part of that funding would have to go to connect to the sidewalk here but where the applicant's property meets. But getting people to that and through, what is the best way to connect them? Would they know, okay, it ends, so I'll just go through the subdivision? Or do they follow it to the conclusion on Victory Road and then come up the common lot and then head east again? I mean, if I'm a homeowner, I would prefer people to be on the backside of the house and along the road as opposed to in front of my house. But it is an either/or, and six and one or half dozen. I don't know.
I don't have a preference. I just don't want a red and white sign put up where sidewalk ends with never continuation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I agree. I think it may not be super intuitive. When the whole thing finally does connect one day, I don't think it will be super intuitive for pedestrians to go through the subdivision. So my preference would be to keep the sidewalk on the Timberline frontage, have the connection go through the common lot. And probably temporarily, there needs to be some type of a sign to indicate this doesn't go all the way through or some, I don't know how we do that, but that's just my initial thought.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I would think at some point in time, if ACHD would allow it, that we would have a sign that would say, you know, pedestrian access to Meridian Road with the sign. I would hope we could work with ACHD to make that so as a direction, but you never know. Councilman Perrow.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was just going to say, I completely agree with Councilwoman Schrader. In addition to there being a sign about it not going through, I would anticipate some signage that identifies it as, as a public walkway because if, if I'm walking along there, I'm assuming if I'm going to head south into Timberline, I'm going to head south into the subdivision, then it's probably private access and not public access. And so I, I wouldn't even think to go into the subdivision. I would just cross the street to the north and take the, take the pathway up there. So I think in this case, the signage will be really important and significant to identify one from the other. But I also expect the same, the same that the mayor has mentioned, which is that pedestrians are going to cross, try to cross Victory Road right there, right there immediately north of where the sidewalk heads up and, and connects to, to what would be the Timberline sidewalk along Victory and not continue to the west and head out of the Timberline entrance where the sidewalk connects to the north side. Am I making sense? So the hawk signal would, if there was one, a pedestrian signal would be significantly helpful to clarify and identify for people that the crossing is not in this location right here next to the common lot.
Mr. Mayor, I might have, or legal counsel on this. And that is, you know, the applicant that's before us, we're determining where their sidewalk's going to be, giving them approval. On the other parcel that's not part of this application, are we just making a recommendation of where the sidewalk goes? Or do we, is that part of the motion? Because that's a different, that's already been taken care of and is moving forward. So how do we handle that?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, great question. So the applicant is required to build a sidewalk. That's a city code requirement. So they're basically asking, where would you want them to build it? Where do you want them to spend the money to build it? Do you want it to build through this walkway that goes to Victory Road? But then, again, there's no sidewalk along Victory Road because that, again, I think, I don't know that the applicant's not committing to build the sidewalk on Victory Road to the east or to the west, correct? Just to the north or making the connection into that subdivision, which would then be incumbent on that subdivision to finish its sidewalk, correct? Because you're not offered to build that road, that sidewalk either. So you're either building the small red arrow or the two arrows. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Neri, we've talked to, my client has talked to the owners and the planner of the Timberline subdivision to try to work out an agreement and a cost sharing if we were to put it through the common lot. As I mentioned previously, for ACHD, this requires, that's their infrastructure. So then there's an agreement that needs to be made. The cleanest option would be, and it would be the least revisioned to anything that has been approved with Timberline, would be to have the path from Victory south, right at the entrance of Timberline and pick up along the north side of, of the road there. And then the three red arrows, which are in our park area, would be the sections of the sidewalk that we would build.
Oh, I see. So, so Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess, again, yeah, you can only make a recommendation on this application, and they're not, again, building anything in the other one. It's, is that connection going to be satisfactory? I missed, and maybe Joe said it, I missed it. What stage of the process is the adjacent project?
Council, Mr. Neri.
I don't think they're actively building.
They, Timberline number two final plat has been approved. I have not received their final plat signature application yet. Timberline one is being constructed now. So those, there's no improvements really for Timberline number two at this point, same as for this property. But there will be a sidewalk here. This sidewalk here would be new to the plat. However, it's in a common lot. They could put that in at any time, and we would never really know nor care because it's not going to be within an easement or anything like that. It's just a sidewalk. So it won't become an ACHD issue until it gets into this common lot, which would be the required frontage improvements.
Mr. Mayor, question.
Joe, so there will be, Timberline will be constructing a sidewalk to that, along Victory, to that point of that red arrow.
That is correct, sir.
Unless we were to somehow take action to us and not to. And I don't, I see, I know we have Mr. Lucas on the line. I think that's, to me, is one of the questions. I guess, council, depending upon the direction you give to this applicant, we may want to take action on the other or not.
And Mr. Mayor, that, that is the question. If, if this is outside of their application, do we, can we take action on that in this, in this motion? Or is it just a recommendation? Or what's the process for that? So.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, it, it would only be a recommendation when, when the application for final plat for the other project comes through. But again, you can't impose new building requirements on them either. If it's just the connection, that's all we're talking about.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Sounds like, if staff can, can confirm, based on what we all just said, if we ask for the connection to happen through the common lot, then what we'll end up with is Timberline subdivision will have a sidewalk along its frontage. Then the pedestrians would go through the common lot and back south of the canal. And then eventually it'll connect through the rest of our sidewalk network. If they could just confirm, you know, that we're getting a continuous sidewalk in that instance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Schrader, that is the intent, yes. As with any subdivision, they're going to be required to continue this sidewalk. As those properties to the east come in, any of them that have frontage along Victory, again, there's physically no room for that without realigning the canal, which, again, this is not going to be one that's going to get tiled because of its size. So the sidewalk will be on the south and east side of the canal and then be continued on as those applications for those parcels come through. But again, we can't, as Mr. Neri said, we can't condition those properties at this point.
To follow up with the applicant, to make sure, it sounds like you have had or the property owner has had discussions with the Timberline representatives, and that is in works to have some sort of agreement, cost sharing, that sort of thing, to construct that sidewalk from the second longer leg of that L on the Timberline side. And so that is, the expectation of everybody is that it's likely that's where it's going to go. And yes, there are some other necessary steps with ACHD to take. But it sounds like everybody's in agreement towards that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. Yes, that is correct. As I mentioned, and Joseph has some correspondence from the planner for the Timberline subdivision and working with her clients and speaking with ACHD to help try to, all of us work together to solve this issue. And I know that my client has had some discussions with them as well. That is the. And I know that my client has had some discussions with them as well. That is the intent, is to try to resolve this and work together.
Thank you.
Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilor Holman, to answer your earlier question, you can still condition this project to make that happen. That that will be a condition of their approval, that they have this connection north to south from the sidewalk that's been approved in Timberline, north to Victory Road. And that's not an imposition on Timberline, because if they don't make it happen, then they're gonna have to come back to ask you to change that condition for them to get a final plat signature, because the deal falls through or something happens.
Not the question, Mr. Neri, but how do we condition things on off property?
You're conditioning, you're conditioning this applicant to make that connection north and south in that location that they're proposing, based on their request.
Their request. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to take a crack on a motion, but I wouldn't wanna close a public hearing.
I see Councilman Borton is unmuted himself. Does he have any questions or comments to add to this conversation?
No, I'll see where the motion goes. I think I'm fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, and we are, we are in a, we still yet to open this up for further comments from the public, so. Is there any further questions for the applicant from council at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman.
The applicant have anything further to add before we get into the next phase?
Mr. Mayor, councilman Holman, thank you. Mr. Neri, to your point, if that's a condition of approval, could it be that the connection is an approved connection for ACHD? Or with ACHD approval, north-south connection, you know, in the event that as, as the plan progresses, that ACHD says, okay, you know, what happens if things shift? I'm just concerned about that. Is that an issue or can we leave it a little bit more broad in terms of what that can, how that condition reads? So that if there is some unforeseen change, we're not coming back and having to do that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so what you're asking is, can staff craft the condition that says it will either either make this north-south connection as depicted on this, on this exhibit? Or an approved ACHD connection that goes to the west that connects to Victory Road. So essentially, that public sidewalk, it will then come out of the entranceway. As an alternative, if the other can't happen, yes, they could craft that if that's the council's desire.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I don't know if we have anyone who signed up to testify in this application.
We did not, Mr. Mayor.
If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to testify, if you'd like to come forward now. And we, last time I checked, I don't think we had anybody in the room.
There is one person who I don't know who they are.
Okay, if you'd like to testify in this application, if you could use the raise your hand feature down below and our court can bring you in to provide testimony. Raising their hand, Mr. Clark?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then with that, I guess I will invite the applicant back up to, for any closing comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanna, on behalf of myself and my client, thank you for your time and your consideration on this. I know it's, it's an important matter in terms of safety in the area and the growth and development of the community in general. Appreciate staff's hard work on this to try to help us get this issue resolved, as well as our neighbors to the west, the Timberline subdivision and their representatives. So I thank you tonight for your time and hope that we can move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
If it works for everybody, I would try to make a motion, but would prefer to leave the hearing open in case we need to iron out some details. So my motion would be, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2020 0067 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 20th, 2020, with the connection to the north per the revised plat, north to Victory Road, or if that alternative is not workable, an alternative connection could be approved by planning staff and the mayor's office. In addition, that the applicant would work with planning staff for any appropriate signage.
So council, you've heard what the motion may become once we close the public hearing. So is there any discussion on that potential motion? Before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman.
Question for staff, Joe, do we need to have included in that to allow the Rydenbach Canal to remain open?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holman, I believe you do, yes, because it's not on the list of the protected waterways, even though it is large. I do you think you have to add that? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Joe, yeah, the next list paragraph talks about the applicant is requesting a council waiver to keep the canal open, so we probably need to, probably need to add that, Councilman Schrader.
Council, anyone else have some feedback on that proposed motion? Or Mr. Neri?
Mr. Mayor, part of the motion I heard was that the planning staff and the mayor's office needs to approve an alternate connection. And that's unusual. That isn't something we've normally done. Not that you can't do that, but it was just unusual. And I was wanting to clarify for the planners on Councilmember Schrader's motion. The north-south connection through that common area lot was contingent upon the ACHD approving it as well as obviously them making an arrangement to make it, to build it with the adjacent property owner. So if either those two contingencies don't happen, the other alternative would then be the already approved existing right-way sidewalk through the subdivision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I would probably invite Ms. Schrader to make that motion again.
After we close the public hearing, he's gonna have a lot to re.
I just wanted to clarify those couple of points.
And you don't need to give the mayor's office any approval in your revised motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close public hearing.
Second. Close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close name, you guys have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I will try real hard, and I know Councilman Borton especially will help me if needed. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2020 dash 0067 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 20th, 2020, with the following conditions: to keep the canal open, to make the connection of Timberline north to Victory Road per the revised plat that was presented in our meeting, to work with planning staff on appropriate signage, and if that connection north to Victory is not workable, with planning staff approval to receive, to get approval of an alternate connection.
Second for discussion.
I have a motion and a second for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
If I understood, the motion would require the the connection to the north as presented on the screen right now on this revised plat. But if, if the applicant and the adjacent property owner are unable to complete that connection as presented, the alternate solution would be to utilize that existing to-be-built connection on the public sidewalk with that property, the timber property to the west. I don't know if there's additional, if our planning department has anything additional to review and approve. But it sounded from the applicant's comment that what's presented is the preferred option A that they will strive to accomplish. But if for whatever reason they're not able to, then the previously approved ACHD access through the neighborhood will be the connection.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Joe.
Maybe.
And Councilman Borton, you are correct in your question there. It's either going to be approve it and and make the applicant get this connection, or your alternative is allowing them to use this portion as their required sidewalk. And then the assumption is that the connection to Victory occurs on the already approved sidewalk along the local streets within Timberline.
Correct.
May- maybe, at least from my perspective, oops, we just didn't get agreement. And now we've just de facto approved that. Even if they say they didn't get into an agreement. So I guess that would be my question to council. And again, just from my perspective, I don't care about which direction, but I don't think if the other applicant, the Timberline would, should have to build that sidewalk, if there's not gonna be any connection to that point. So I, my request to council is choose one or the other, and if one doesn't work, make them come back and make a decision about both at that appropriate time.
I agree. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I would be in favor of the first option and striking the alternative option. And if in the future that that's not able to take place, then we can approach that at a later date. I think that that is, in my opinion, by far the most, it's the most advantageous connection. The other one is very confusing and could be potentially, it could, it's just not opportunistic in my, in my opinion. So I would be in favor of having Ms. Schrader's motion without the alternative at this time and approaching it in the future if need be.
All right, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I would like to revise my motion to strike the alternative ability for planning staff to approve an alternative route. And if there, my discussion piece on that would be if, for some reason, this doesn't work out, the applicant could certainly come back before us.
Does the second concur or not concur?
Second agrees.
We have a motion, a second with modifications. Is there further discussions or comments on the motion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you. Very much for staff and everyone working to find that solution for now, and hopefully we can make that area somewhat connected. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Gemstone Center number three, H 2020 dash 0094. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments. I'll turn this over to Alan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Planner with City Meridian. This is a relatively simple case. This is a vacation of easements. And what it is, is there is a property that's approximately 9.8 acres. It is on the northwest quadrant of Pine and Hickory. There's, there's three existing lots there now, and I'll give you this. So there's, or sorry, there's four existing lots there now. The applicant came into the city and they want to do a certificate of zoning compliance in order to do a large warehouse building on this property. This warehouse building would be laying across these interior lot lines. If you look here, I've highlighted them yellow for you to show you what is actually being proposed. In order to do that, they have to go through a parcel boundary adjustment. So basically, it's an administrative process with staff where they would merge all of the lots into one lot so that they can build that building. However, on the existing plat, and that's the note that you see that's highlighted there, it's note two. It says that interior lot lines, that there is utility and drainage easements that that are in place of five feet on either side of interior lots. Because that note is there, staff does not have the authority to merge these lots together without the council actually vacating these easements. As is required, we were able to get letters from all of the providers. So that would be CenturyLink, Sparklight, Inner Mountain Gas, Idaho Power, and they all were fine with this. And this is the result of what's happening. This, this certificate of zoning compliance has been issued pending this as a condition of approval. And the parcel boundary adjustment would also be a condition of approval. So with that, staff would recommend that the city council approve this case and vacate the easements in this area.
Thank you, Alan. Council, have any questions for staff? Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to, there she is, be recognized for 15 minutes? Say your name, not just for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tamara Thompson. I'm with the land group at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. I think Alan covered it pretty well. This is an existing subdivision, the Gemstone Center number three, which was recorded in 1999. And I just want to clarify that there are no existing facilities within those drainage and utility easements. Therefore, the utility companies were fine with releasing those easements. And, and we are doing a lot, a boundary line adjustment for the purpose of consolidating all the lots. And my clients are ready to get started with this project and submitting for their CCC and then construction drawings for permits. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Council, any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody present who would like to provide testimony on this application? See no one in the audience and no one online. Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Thank you. I'm, I'm fine. I really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
And with that, council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman.
I move we close the public hearing for H 2020 dash 00894.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Second to motion.
I have motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name, you guys have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman.
After hearing staff and applicant testimony, I move we approve H 2020 dash 0094 as presented in the staff report for October 20th, 2020.
I have a motion, a second to approve item H 2020 dash 0094. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Burnt. Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any item under future meeting topics? If not, do I have a motion for item number 12?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I move that we go into executive session prior to code 74 dash 206A 1A and 74 dash 2061F.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to go into executive session. Is there a discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Burnt. Aye.
All eyes, and we adjourn to executive session.